Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, February 24th, 2021. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. Meetings can now be viewed live on the City Channel and live streamed on YouTube. Our first order business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. Please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. After doing so, your three minutes will begin. Our first speaker is Aikuhana Halmaukina.
Greetings, peace, light and love. My title is Aikuhana Halmaukina. I am the Grand Inca of the Arawak Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I would like to express my concerns about Indigenous people and our land. My question to City Council members today is, would you ever allow your child to keep something they stole from a stranger? I could only imagine that if you were able to answer me, your answers would be no. You would not condone such behavior. Now I realize that this is sheer speculation on my part, but I am hoping and appealing to the moral fabric of your conscience. Knowing that this is not your land, knowing that this land belonged to the so-called Indians, we'd much rather refer to ourselves as just sheerly the original Americans, which is the word aborigine means original, the first, from the beginning. We are the Aboriginal American People. We are those people that were referred to as Indians. How could you assume such arrogance to believe that we should not be considered, that a conversation should not be had? We are tired of not being at the table when matters of our land and resources are being discussed. It is downright disrespectful to take over the stewardship of our land without our input, without our free, informed and prior consent. It is unlawful. It is immoral. It is unjust. So before you continue on about your daily duties, when you get up and look at yourself in the mirror tomorrow morning, to come and do what you call the business for the people, I want you all to consider the multitude of people who do still honor their heritage, their culture, their sacred places and spaces and spirituality. My grandmother is 89 years old, and it is her wish that before she leaves this earth, that you will be compelled to do what is right, because it is on the strong backs of my ancestors, that I do this work, that I plead to you all to do what is noble, what is right, what is just, to act in good faith towards the Indians, which is why we are constantly mentioned in the Constitution. And so if you're bound by your oath to uphold, support, protect and defend the Constitution, then I urge you-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kotekibe. Our next speaker is Kotekibe. If not, our next speaker is Shomon Pohmy.
Greetings, M'K'Alaka'een. The light in me honors the light in you. Aborigine American people matter, and we will not go away, nor will we cease standing up for our people's inalienable rights. We are not titled 25 Native Americans whom are originally of British descent by definition of the United States and are not aborigine, yet are in fact citizens. We are not citizens of the United States. We are the aborigine, so-called Indians. According to the Bouvier's Dictionary adapted to the Constitution, Indians are the Aboriginal people in the Americas, the first United States of America, which included over 50 states, now referred to as countries, which includes the United States of America. And again, as I said before, a lie, no matter how many times it's spoken, is still a lie, even if it rings true. That is my quote. We Indigenous Peoples have a right to our own autonomy. We have a right, according to the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, to self-identify, and we choose to identify as our grandmothers identified. We choose to claim our heritage and our culture. We refuse forced assimilation and genocidal tactics to be forced to be called a citizen, when we are truly not citizens. We are the stewards of our lands, and we worked in tandem, and our ancestors worked in tandem with your people, the Europeans of all parts of Europe, and to include Asia, and to include parts of what is now called Africa, which was called Barbaria at that time. We are holding you accountable to your oaths, in the most kindest way we come to you, and we have repeatedly. We are no longer just asking to sit at the table. We are in a position of holding you accountable to your oaths, your sworn oaths to the Constitution. As you have rights to live in our land, on our lands, we have rights to steward our lands. Our rights are international rights, as well as United States Congress rights. They will not be trampled on. We are not here to make war with your people. Are you here to make war with us? Are you here to create more chaos on our lands? Are you here to continue the genocide of your ancestors? Are you here to continue the forced assimilation of your ancestors? I think that you have better moral fiber than that. We've spoken to you. We've touched, and our spirits have connected. We know many of you have good hearts, so we are compelling you to do the right thing, to respond to our emails, to continue our meetings, and to move forward. So let the healing begin of the multiple lives that were lost in the many wars and battles that were fought, the Indian wars that don't get taught in school, although we know-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Piladi.
Hello. My name is Anne Wright. I come from South Oakland. I'd like to speak today in favor of the modifications to the proposed eviction moratorium proposed by the Legal Aid Community. This is urgent that we do the right thing here. There's currently 102 hearings scheduled for Pittsburgh just the week of March 1st, and 250 in the month of March, 396 total scheduled. And in addition to the folks who haven't had a hearing yet, there have been 81 orders for possession in the city of Pittsburgh since the CDC moratorium began, and there are currently 120 additional cases which have been found for the plaintiff in the last 180 days, where the order for possession could be requested at any time. In order to be able to protect those folks and folks who landlords are potentially preparing to file on, we need to do better in the city of Pittsburgh to protect those tenants. The language, proposed language as it originally was, would put the burden on the tenant in order to do additional certification on top of the CDC declaration in order to be protected. The proposed changes by the Legal Aid Community would put that requirement on the landlord to show that the reason is actually a material breach of the lease, such as criminal conduct or damage to the property, or other compelling basis. And to be able to screen out cases that have been getting through the CDC moratorium, for instance, grandmothers whose grandchildren are visiting, or people who have pets that the landlord never previously had a problem with. So I urge you please to consider those proposed changes and to do the right thing today. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Jacob Klinger.
Hey y'all. Yeah, my name is Jacob. I'm with the Pittsburgh Union of Regional Renters. My pronouns are he and him. I'm back to also urge you all to adopt amendments to the proposed eviction action that are auto-enrolling, that do place the burden of even getting these hearings into the courts, which is a public health hazard in and of itself, onto the landlord. Again, we operate from a place of housing as a human right. It is wild to us that, you know, there's this much contortion around trying to deny people that, but things being what they are, the burden needs to be on landlords, just as in a criminal proceeding, you know, the burden of proof is on the plaintiff. And I say that not just because, you know, I feel like it sounds okay, but because that's the reality of eviction, anytime, is that the consequences of an eviction have the same consequences that a lot of criminal proceedings do. It haunts you in your ability to get housing for the rest of your life. It damages your credit. It separates families. These are all things we're supposed to be opposed to. And I just think this is a common sense thing with the things that we've established so far. We know you'll have the authority to do this. You have demonstrated and repeatedly stated your will to do this, close the loopholes, finish the job, and we really appreciate it. I also just want to say that, you know, forcing people off of their land is part of the longer story that was being talked about earlier, and this is a very, 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 very small, and certainly not, you know, good enough chance for you to show some acknowledgement of the fact that, like, yeah, people have a place to be, and we shouldn't be, you know, hanging ourselves up over trying to do otherwise in the middle of a pandemic. So please do adopt those amendments. Please do make this auto-enrolling. Please do put this burden where it should be, people who are trying to do some evil in the middle of the plague. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate y'all working with us on this.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bailey Brown.
Good morning. My name is Bailey Brown. Your friend here again to urge you, as others are, to pass Councilwoman Gross's proposal for an eviction moratorium and ban with the proposed amendments. It should be amended so that the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations can screen out exceptions to the ban, and as others have said, the burden of proof needs to be on the landlords, because tenants have enough going on, especially if they are being evicted. They are likely struggling. And also, as stated, this policy needs to auto-enroll and close the loopholes. This will prevent deaths for real. So I'm just showing up again to urge you to follow through. Let's get this done. I have other folks who are struggling in other ways that I would love to volunteer and help in new ways next week. I also support Indigenous folks and Aboriginal folks' right to self-determination and autonomy, and hope you enjoy this beautiful preview of spring, and please soften your hearts and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Candace Echols.
Good morning. My name is Candace Echols, and I am a lifetime resident of the North Side, a 27-year employee of Pittsburgh Public Schools, and a 24-year homeowner of Observatory Hill. I'm reaching out today to comment about the upcoming discussion about eviction moratorium. I've owned a single home property in Esplan since 2009. It was initially intended for personal use. In 2018, a student of mine and her family had been staying in a motel intermittently. After months of assisting the family in the ways I could with food, clothing and money, I agreed to allow her to stay in my home on a monthly agreement at a significantly reduced rent that she suggested, until I was able to recover from surgery and wouldn't be able, and would be able to continue my plan of opening a daycare there. Things were good until they weren't. In 2019, for the second time, she left a plumbing problem go unreported to the tune of several thousand dollars. The last contact I had with her was in February 2020 at the conclusion of the repair. It was only through the plumber that I could speak with her, because she avoided my calls. She had promised to pay her balance by March 7. At this point, she was short on December's rent and had not paid anything since. Once the due date passed, I initiated the eviction process with a notice, then COVID halted the process. She has not paid me anything since. She has evaded me until I caught her at home in July, despite her son telling me she wasn't there. She has reiterated that she does not have to pay rent during this time, which is not the expectation. I tried to walk her through the process of submitting paperwork to get aid, to which she has not followed through. She has received support for herself and her children via stimulus and EBT program, which our schools have helped her complete paperwork for. My property is a complete mess, and she has another adult staying there that was not approved. The PWSA bill is now over $13,000, and I'm on the chopping block for a lien. I offered creative ways for her to compensate me, but she never followed through. When I could file for eviction, I did, and had a mediation session scheduled, but she did not show. Each appointment since then has been postponed. This vote you all are considering will cancel my hearing except for 311. I'm already at a point of just giving up, because I cannot fathom the unknown expenses this has caused me, and I do not see a way out. A blanket policy cannot be put in place regarding evictions. I first spoke out about this in the spring via the news, and my story was swallowed up by the rent protest story that ran after it. I have been reaching out to the governor and mayor via social media with no acknowledgement at all. This has increased my stress load 100-fold, especially as I near an early retirement due to disability. At the very least, these cases should be examined on an individual basis. Despite the persona, not all landlords are bad, and not all residents are honest. I haven't trusted my property to this person before any guarantee for myself. I'm experiencing financial struggles too, and cannot take care of another family. Why are we expected to shoulder this burden?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Taylor.
Good morning. I said, the first thing I want to talk about is also the moratorium. I'm a local landlord here in the city of Pittsburgh, and my issue today is that I'd like you to consider is that I hear everybody talking about the tenants. Nobody's talking about the landlord. I have experienced myself tenants who are making excuses and using the moratorium as an excuse not to pay rent, when they are not impacted by financial burdens at all. And some of my questions are that if you're going to put a moratorium on rent, why not put a moratorium on the taxes that I have to pay on that rental property that you won't allow me to collect rent on, in addition to putting a moratorium on to the water bills and the electric bills and the gas bills that we have to pay? Also, I think that maybe the tenants need to provide strict proof that they are actually impacted financially by the pandemic. When you go to a bank loan, they don't just take your word, because they sign that blanket affidavit that says I'm out of work. The bank doesn't do that. The bank says, we want to see your tax returns. We want to see your W2s. So maybe the tenants need to provide strict proof in terms of maybe that they did file for unemployment, because if you are truly impacted financially, you can't tell me that these people did not file for unemployment, yet we will take their word for it, and we are racking up bills and bills and bills. Also, the banks who are making money hand over fist, when it's all said and done, and these chickens come to roost and payment is due, the bank at least has the ability to foreclose on property, which gives them a tangible asset. All we're going to get as a landlord is this piece of paper that gives us a judgment that we'll never be able to collect on, because we're collecting it from people who couldn't pay us rent in the first place. So I guess what I'm asking you to do is to consider making the tenants prove that they actually need help, but to also keep in place the CDC recommendations that would guard us against people who are providing illegal activities in the home, have lease violations, and whose leases have expired. So I want to thank you for listening, and I would hope you would take into consideration the landlords that are also being affected by us not being able to collect rent, especially from those people who are taking advantage of the situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe our last speaker is Solentia Subinalist. I apologize if I did not say your name correctly.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Solentia Sevalis, and I am a Family Support Specialist with the Children's Institute in Beaver County. My role as a Family Support Specialist is to connect low-income families with affordable housing. I am in favor of the eviction moratorium. I would like the Council to consider what type of safety measures can be and or will be put in place for tenants, once landlords require the full payment of back old rent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do believe that exhaust our list. I'm just trying to double-check it. There was one gentleman who was, did not make it. I still do not see his name. Bailey Brown? No, we did.
Can I?
No, you just get three minutes. I'm sorry. There was, there was one gentleman who I was looking for, who I still don't see, who was running late. Alright, so we will move on to our Standing Committee agenda, with a clerk please take the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Nine members present.
Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one new paper, Bill 1203.
Bill 1203, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to accept a donation from Allegheny County of the installation Wi-Fi hotspots at McKinley and Phillips Recreation Center, and 24 months of internet service valued at $43,703.24 to offer free Wi-Fi to the surrounding community.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, motion to approve or I'll second.
Need a second?
Second, please.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Briefly?
Yes.
Yeah, this is wonderful, that Wi-Fi support's coming to McKinley Rec. Oh, Director Chapman's here. Did you wish to speak to this director?
Morning, Council.
Yeah, no, good morning. This is, this is great. This will help us to do a number of things that we have in the pipeline at McKinley Rec. So I'm very happy to see it, happy to support it, and I welcome your comments.
Oh, thanks. Thanks for having me. I just wanted to mention, yeah, we were working closely with the folks at Allegheny County. I think there were some additional funds that they were able to secure to make this happen. We gave them pretty much the location of every one of our facilities, not knowing which ones they might select. So hopefully, this is the start of just maybe more of this to come, but it's nice that we were able to capture this with no cost to the city. It will help amplify the current Wi-Fi service that the city provides, and it will allow folks in the immediate area to have free access to Wi-Fi. So thanks for the support. Just wanted to mention that.
The director, just one quick question. Would you have any idea of just how broad a net is going to be cast around McKinley Rec? That's okay.
I think it might be really specific to the topography and geography of that area, Council, but I'm not sure, but I can certainly reach out. There's some, some really good, smart, helpful people at the county that we worked with closely. This was, took a little while to get this together to figure out how to make this donation happen, so I can reach out and find out. I think it would be within maybe a one-block radius. I'm not sure. It might be a little different at Phillips, because it's so hilly there in that particular area. It might extend a little further.
With Richard Carrington's programming there, it would be wonderful if it did extend into the park, just in some way, you know, that the outside activities that take place could be Wi-Fi compatible. You know, that's all I was thinking about.
I think that's the case. I think that's what we're shooting for, Councilman.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Bill is recommended.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Sorry for interrupting. I wanted to register aye votes. I'm unable to make the rest of the meeting due to a light of life event.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
That will move us on to our invoices. We need a motion for the approval of the invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Invoices are approved. That takes us to our interdepartmental transfers. We need a motion for their approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Transfers are approved. That takes us to our P cards. We need a motion to approve the P cards.
So moved.
Second.
We now need a motion to waive Rule 11 for our annual, well, quarterly payment to the state.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the waiver, say aye.
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 Waiver is passed. Any further discussion on the P cards? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? P cards are approved. That moves us on to our Public Safety Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilman O'Connor, one deferred paper, Bill 0145.
Bill 145, Ordinance, Amendment Ordinance Number 36 of 2019, Amending and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title VI, Conduct Article III, Dogs, Cats and Other Animals by Repealing Chapter 639, and Adding a New Chapter 639, Prohibiting, Keeping, Sale, Exchange, Adoption, Exchange or Transfer of Such Animals in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to hold. Oh, sorry. Motion to hold discussion.
Which is not a proper motion. Would you have motioned to approve with brief discussion, then I will motion to hold?
Okay, motion to approve, brief discussion.
Thanks, Councilman. I just want members to know that, you know, while we keep holding this bill, it is not for progress. There actually is progress being made, and there's open lines of communication against a number of different entities. And so we continue to work through it. And so I appreciate your patience during this time, and I appreciate Councilman O'Connor's willingness to assist with a four-week hold. So motion to hold four weeks, please.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Bill will be held four weeks. First new paper, Bill 1204.
Bill 1204, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a license agreement with SMG and Sports and Exhibition Authority of Allegheny County, at a cost not to exceed $750 for the purpose of hosting a Department of Public Safety Promotion Ceremony at the David L. Lawrence Convention Center on March 4, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. First new paper, Bill 1194.
Bill 1194, Resolution Granting Unto the University of Pittsburgh. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own constant expense to install maintain, and use at their own constant expense to install three new entrance canopies at fifty fifty-one Center Avenue in the eighth ward, seventh council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill eleven ninety-five.
Bill eleven ninety-five, resolution granting up to Square View Apartments L E. Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own constant expense, a projecting sign at thirty-four twenty-nine Butler Street in the sixth ward, sixth council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have to, uh, publicly declare that I have a conflict in this legislation. My wife has an interest in this property, so I will be abstaining.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Gross, isn't this in your district?
It is.
Okay, then we just made it.
Oh, yes, I see that now. So we have a little technical amendment, seventh, seventh council district. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended.
Abstain.
One abstention, thank you. Bill eleven ninety-seven.
Bill eleven ninety-seven, resolution granting unto Care Gook their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own constant expense, a new reinforced concrete ADA compliant walk-in surface at thirty-three fifteen Liberty Avenue in the sixth ward, seventh council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill twelve oh five.
Bill twelve oh five, resolution approving the recommendation made by the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Mount Royal Road be paved with asphalt in accordance with section four seventeen oh six of the Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill twelve oh six.
Bill twelve oh six, resolution approving the recommendation made by the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that Boulevard Drive be paved with asphalt in accordance with section four seventeen oh six of the Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Um, one supplemental paper, bill twelve thirty-seven.
Bill twelve thirty-seven, ordinance amending title seven business licensing article ten rental of residential housing by including new chapter seven eighty-two temporary eviction regulation for disease prevention and control due to COVID nineteen.
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
Um, thank you all. Um, so we heard testimony this morning. This is the bill, of course, that we presented um, yesterday and motioned for rule eight. And, um, just to recap, comments from yesterday, the CDC moratorium and the way it's been applied in Western Pennsylvania through our courts, magisterial courts has a lot of loopholes. It's basically allowing almost every kind of eviction except for lack of cash payment. Um, and as we've heard in the testimony and, and have kind of been keeping update on these numbers over the last couple of months, uh, there are very detailed numbers that we have a hundred and twenty, um, evictions that, you know, could have happened yesterday while we were speaking, could happen right now. They've literally proceeded all the way through the entire process where constables could show up at that door right now. There's an additional one hundred and eighty that are very close to being completely through the process where they are almost at that order for possession. So what to do, right? We, we are trying in this legislation to tighten up, provide more expansive protections, right? Expand protections for tenants, but still allow for a pathway for those grievances that we heard a little bit about in testimony today. There are some situations I heard about, for example, from Councilwoman Smith, that, you know, the community has actually been working for a very long time on, um, making their apartment neighborhood safer because there are, there are situations where one tenant putting them in danger. Um, and we need to break, make sure that we're protecting a pathway for that. So just to recap, I had sent you all a memo a week or so ago saying how we started off with trying to insert language back in the middle of January and seeing what it would look like in the declaration of emergency that went to a law department opinion and who discouraged us from taking that path and putting us here instead of amending title seven. Um, we've been back and forth of language multiple times. A little bit of what you heard this morning, we were still working through late last night huh, in that the language I introduced yesterday, Tuesday, which thank you to, and thank you to all the members who co-sponsored, could be still flushed out a little bit about how a landlord especially can be heard and, um, have a way to present to the courts that they're not in violation of the city ordinance. And so that's the language that I just emailed to you this morning after we called to order. And so I'm not going to try to, you know, motion to amend that now, but you do have it there to read. I thought since this is kind of coming just before us and related from yesterday, we wanted to maybe just start with questions and answers um, today. So, I'll, um, I will stop talking and I'll let members kind of ask, um, you know, their first question since we haven't had a chance to discuss yet.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Kraus, I saw first.
Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, Councilman, will you permit, or, or, Mr. Chair, will you permit interrogatory with the councilwoman?
Yes.
So I, I, I'd be lying to say that I wasn't a little bit nervous about amending of language that we'd kind of come to a sense of agreement about. But on the first read, I'm, I'm more comfortable than what I thought I was going to be with the amendment. So why don't we just, can you walk through just philosophically what you'd like, what we collectively would like to achieve, uh, with this piece and with the amendments? I too have some authentic concern in reservation a- about our inability to, to keep this balance. That, you know, uh, we both fight for our, 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 our single, um, property landlord owners and we want to protect them. We certainly don't want to put them in, in positions where they find themselves in a bind. But yet at the same time, want to protect anyone from undue cause to, to be affected during this COVID crisis. So let's, let's just go through these, if you don't mind. I don't know that we have to take action per se, but I think it would really, it would be helpful to discuss. Um, and if you wouldn't mind, would you go through them?
I'll start at the broad level. Um, and then I think I have both, uh, the director of the Commission on Human Relations, hopefully in the waiting area. And I don't know that he's, if we need to call Mr. Hammond, he's already a panelist.
Let's not call anyone just quite yet.
First, I just wanted, I was just double checking and excuse me, talking out loud, so. Um, so in the draft that we introduced yesterday, you have, um, the right basically, um, as a landlord to, um, to move forward, right, and not be in violation of the ordinance. If there is conduct that presents an imminent health or safety threat to other residents or inhabitants um, or property staff because of criminal activity, et cetera. You also have, um, the right to, well, it says that no landlord can refuse to terminate a lease in the new language. So we hadn't specified, I believe, in the old language. Um, it says we can't re-renew a lease, but what we're seeing is refuse to renew a lease. What we're seeing is that landlords are still doing that. And that's, I, we feel that giving it a pathway in the city through the Commission on Human Relations oh, to
To adjudicate?
Interpreter, the interpreter of our ordinance, which is their role and capacity is to interpret, right, when there, when there are grievances about our protections on rights, they, I don't, I, I, maybe Mr. Hammond would say adjudicate. I'm not comfortable if, that speaking for the, being the authority on, on that role. Um, to be able to get that kind of certification from the city that you're not in violation of our ordinance. Because that will give legal clarity for landlords to move forward in magisterial court. So I, I do think this is important. I've heard both sides, right? I have, uh, you and I have talked about this now for a number of years, but just for the listening public, right? We both represent districts where there are just a, a, a very high level of small holdings landlords.
Yeah.
Residents who have grandma's house next door, who have tenants in them. I have landlords that I know are refusing to evict their tenants for non-payment right now, right? I know they've spoken to me and they've said, look, I've got like one property and I know my, and I'm just working with my tenant. I know my tenant can't pay, but I'm not evicting my tenant. And I, I, I don't want to, um, I want to pro-promote and support our small holding landlords. I would rather that the city of Pittsburgh have um, be rich and small holding landlords and not be dominated by large real estate trusts or LLCs, the way other cities are. Um, and I think it's, it's a, it's a powerful part of our housing infrastructure. Um, but on the other hand, I also have emails and phone calls and I could, I'm just trying to find one to read to you that I just, I think coincidentally got yesterday where, um, uh, la- a tenant got and I noticed that the rent was being raised three hundred dollars a month. And then when the tenant said, it's a tenant who's current, on their current rent. And when the landlord said, well, um, you know, you're going to be terminated at the end of your lease and the, and the tenant said, you know, there are a number of repairs that I've been complaining about. You haven't been fixing. The landlord said, okay, you have one week. Now, of course, that would have to go to the magisterial courts and we would see what would happen there. But as I mentioned yesterday, I do think we have, well, we have valid cases on both sides. There are a very many cases where landlords are evicting unduly. And that this legislation would help to close up tho- the language that is lacking in the both, um, dark, District Five moratorium language, um, and certainly in the CDC language as it's being interpreted here. So, um, I don't think I can speak anymore to the process that, and I think that they, the, the people that we having um, waiting to be called to the table, if you want to call them to the table, could give you much better detail than I could.
Would it be all right if I just read through? It, it really is very brief. Just read, read through what would be the proposed changes? Uh, I'm not sure.
Absolutely.
Have it in front of them or not, so.
First of all, did every, yeah, did, are members able to open the email? Thank you.
Yeah, I do have it for, so, um, I will begin, I, I will skip, uh, amendment A and just go directly to, to B. That no landlord may take action to cause the eviction of an individual or household except for good cause. A landlord desiring to evict an individual or household may request an exemption from the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations upon proof of any of the following. And then number one would be for non-payment of rent and utilities unless such non-payment was due to substantial loss of household income or hours of work or wages due to the loss of employment and or medical expenses both that are COVID-related illnesses and pre-existing illnesses. Non-payment failure also includes late fees, penalties, or interest uh, unrelated to the aforementioned reasons. And then section B is stricken. Uh, no landlord can refuse to renew a lease or terminate a lease due to previous tenant non-payment or lease term violation. Uh, and then E is changed to, uh, number two under section B. And nothing herein shall preclude eviction refusal to renew a lease or terminate a lease except for is stricken. And then it begins with conduct that presents an imminent threat to the health or safety of other residents, inhabitants, or property staff, including criminal activity in the unit or housing premise, engaging in actions or behaviors that threaten the health or safety of other residents and violating any applicable building code or health ordinance relating to health and safety. And then number three is added under, um, section seven eighty-two oh two. Other material breach of the lease terms such as criminal conduct or damage to the property or other compelling basis, not specifically enumerated herein, which breach or other, uh, basis shall be strictly scrutinized to ensure that the negative effects of a residential eviction during the pandemic are mitigated. And then section C, no landlord can refuse to review a lease or terminate a lease due to previous tenant non-payment or lease term violations. Section D, uh, is also amended. The Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations shall, shall develop procedures for accepting and reviewing requests for exemption from the requirements of this chapter in partnership with such boards, authorities, and departments of the city and non-governmental entities as it finds appropriate. And then section E speaks to, uh, fines for violation. So I guess, Councilwoman, my only question is, and I'm, I'm actually, I'm kind of embarrassed that I, I don't, really don't know this, but under, under the authorities of the Human Relations Commission, can you help me to understand how they would interpret, um, the eligibility of, of eviction meeting specified criteria? Did I ask that well?
I if, again, from my perspective, it's more the case that our first draft did not assign that capacity, that task to any city department. And then when you look and see where the skill sets, the people power and the resources are, it's not in PLI, which is kind of typical title seven, right? And so by ordinance, the authority comes from the ordinance that we hear assign it, right? And so we are assigning this role to the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations by this ordinance. Again, I just want to remind everyone, as I said yesterday, to, that this is merely tied to the state of emergency. It completely goes away the minute we don't renew our declaration of emergency. So it's really important to, to just make the public understand that and for us to understand that this is, um, not a permanent capacity that would be assigning to the already, to the work burden of the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations. Uh, but I, I do believe that this is where the kind of personnel with the skill sets and the capacity are today.
So, Councilwoman, my bad, I should have scrolled down just a little bit further and then I could have read that it does sunset. So everyone is aware, uh, chapter seventy-eighty-two shall expire upon, upon termination of the city's disaster emergency declaration or by city council's legislative termination, whichever sooner. So, um,
Kind of why I was going to walk through the original draft first before we got to the amendments, but I think we're all following along, so it's okay.
Okay, so I appreciate the interrogatory, just to sort of get it out there on the table, Mr. Chair. I'm going to step back, uh, and listen to what other members' thoughts are. Um, and, uh, anyone who, uh, maybe wished to, to call to the table.
Thank you. Other members, Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, would you permit interrogatory with Councilwoman Gross as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I did want to circle back to the original legislation because I had some questions about some of the concerns that we've heard. Actually, first, first, I would like first, I would like to, um, address some of the concerns we heard in public comment about water moratorium and water shut offs. I want everyone to know that PWUSA, if you live in a PWUSA service area, there is a moratorium on water shut offs, water termination. That is up for renewal March thirty-first. So, um, PWUSA is working day and night to contact any customer whose interview is, and owes wa- owes water bill. Your water will not be shut off, but there are a multitude of programs that you can sign up for, um, customer assistance programs. And the number is eight six six seven six two two three four eight. To call and find out if you're eligible and enroll in any of the programs. It's eight six six seven six two two three four eight. So I wanted to start by just making sure that if, if any of the commentators are still listening, that they are aware of that program. Now, a couple of the concerns that we've heard, actually, the majority of concerns we heard from, um, groups who are, and individuals who are in favor of this, um, this legislation and in fact, um, the amendment were about it being self-effectuating. There were concerns about that. And my read of it shows that there's language in there that says that this, um, this COVID certification of COVID-related hardship. It says a tenant may, and this is not actually changed in the amendment either. A tenant may or may not present to a court of competent jurisdiction, this, this kind of proof of COVID hardship. And to me, that gets at the concern, but is, I mean, Councilwoman, is that your understanding too, that that language in there is meant to get at this concern around, um, having to, like, have it giving the tenant the burden of proof? But I see also what the amendment does further to kind of flip the burden of proof further.
What's confusing to me as well, I was at first concerned that, like, it, um, everyone would be required to get it, right? But what I, uh, again, I, I went back over with, um, Mr. Dame Wood, who was helping me with his language last night. And it's only, um, in case they are actually being brought into court. But that provides the problem. So that if someone is being, um, sued for eviction, that then they would have to kind of go through this city process of, of trying to certify that they were being unjustly you know, sought for eviction. And so it's just be, I, I think that path is too fuzzy. And, um, and it isn't spelled out as a, as a, on our side. How are we going to do that? So, um, I, 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 I'm not sure that I can explain it any more clearly. Um, but if you wanted to go back and forth again with Mr. Dame Wood, who's got, uh, as an attorney and is someone who has, is specializes in housing law and eviction law. He's got a lot more experience in being able to explain how specific cases would be different, um, than do I.
Okay. I am interested in hearing from Mr. Dame Wood, but I guess I'll move on to my next question for now and maybe second round or, or something else. I'd like to hear the other council members' questions as well, but perhaps second round, we can open it up to others. Um, to discuss. I, I guess I have the same question that Councilwoman Kraus was getting at, which is I don't believe I understand the process well enough and how this process would relate to the courts to understand the power of the Commission on Human Relations as it relates to this issue.
I think that's fair. I mean, honestly, right? We, we haven't done this before. Um, and so we're trying to figure out a way to do this. And so I think it's entirely legitimate concern. Um, one of the, before I answer that, one of the additional, um, suggestions from our law department, which I think council should pursue in the coming weeks, but we didn't have time to complete this week. Is to see if there is, um, right, that, that our solicitor, um, should be doing this, um, kind of diplomacy with the District Five courts. Um, in fact, there have been conversations, I've spoken to Judge Clark in a, in a, in a meeting setting. Um, who is the presiding, the president judge over District Five Magisterial Courts. Um, I know our solicitor has also spoken to, or I think Director Powell has spoken recently, um, to Judge Clark. Um, and so how we proceed is, it's still to be solidified, I would say, right? Um, but that on our end, I think it's council's responsibility to put the city processes in this ordinance, again, temporary ordinance, uh, but still to put them there so that we can present our suggestion for moving forward. I think that's where we are today, right?
And that was going to be my next question, kind of like, what is, what more can we do to affect change at a level of government that is not typically the city's responsible, you know, or on an issue where it's on typically the city's responsibility and if, if, um, if this isn't great, if there's another way outside of legislation, great, but I think we all want to do what we can to, to advocate and affect change at that level.
And I know, Councilwoman, that you and I have also spoken about, like, well, how did it work in Harrisburg and, and why aren't we doing it that way? But even their inserting language into their declaration of emergency still meant honestly that the courts just had to cooperate with them. Right? I mean, they could have gone down a legal battle, to be fair. Right? That says like, you know, you can't legislate what the courts do. Um, but because we are all in a once in a one hundred year pandemic. Um, and that we know that there are significant public health risks. Not just for the tenants, though we don't want to put tenants in harms and put them out on the street, but for everyone. Right? You're going into more crowded housing situations or you're in an emergency shelter situation and we are trying to slow down the spread, especially at this moment. There are new variants out on the streets. We're trying to get ahead with vaccines. We know that there are snafus and snags and it's rolling out slowly. So it's still important, we're not through this emergency and this pandemic yet. It's critically important that we do what we can to help people isolate at home, which means they have to have a home. And so, um, it, we, it does mean working together with the other bodies of government and trying to find a way that we think we are doing, uh, staying in our lane, but making sure that we provide more coverage. And so I think that's, that's where we are.
And it's my understanding that Philadelphia courts have ordered a much broader enforcement over, um, I guess, a writ enforcement of, uh, a stay on the enforcement of nearly all writs of possession. I'm not totally clear about that language, but but that indicates to me is that that is much more, uh, a much more stringent stay on any kind of eviction. Um, more than Allegheny County. So, to the extent that we can in- impact change at that level, I think it's really important. But I'm going to leave my questions at that for now. I do have other questions that I'd like to address. Uh, I, I would like, um, Chief Powell and Mr. Hammond, Director Hammond and, um, perhaps, uh, Mr. Dame would to address, but I would like other council members to take their questions at first. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. Other members? Councilman Kaku?
Yes, Councilwoman Bell, I'm next, please. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that now or is it me?
It's only you, Councilman.
Okay, so, uh, again, I signed on yesterday with Councilwoman Gross's, um, bill and I really applaud her for fighting for the people who are most in need. Um, I did take a phone call this morning from a landlord, uh, constituent of mine. And I struggled to answer his question and I just wanted to see if somebody can help me out to try to answer his question. So, so his tenant is ten months in the rear, uh, you know, approximately $10,000. Um, he's got a big heart to the landlord, you know, he's not one to throw anybody out on the street just because they're not paying rent, even if we weren't in an emergency crisis. Uh, but he said to me, you know, Anthony, I'm $10,000, I have property taxes that are due and struggling with his own bills. So I'm not going to pretend to know, you know, exactly what the federal government's going to be allocating or how they can recover that money. So that's why I'm asking, um, anybody who can possibly help me answer that question. So I can give him an answer, you know, because there are two sides of it, of course, you know, there are bad landlords and there are bad tenants as well, you know, so. Um, where's the fine line, I guess, when so, a landlord is counting on that rent to pay his or her own bills? And the process as to how they can recover it, or do we have a guarantee from the government? I'm just not quite sure myself.
Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, and so I just, I, I will, um, just respond a little bit if permitted and, and then, um, I think we may have people on the line who could answer again in more detail than I can. But I just want to remind you that we've already put millions into that system, right? As the city, we've allocated all of our CARES money to the URA and I'll mention that those kind of thousand or more tenants that got cash assistance, those went to rent payments. Um, and then in the county system, the dollars don't even, don't go through the tenant, they go straight to the landlord. And that we recently allocated a new eight point nine million um, that will go, I, as I believe, but we should check with the people here on the call, that, who are literally creating the program, like Director Powell. That those will go also straight to landlords. And so when you call the kind of like, um, rent help, like, uh, phone number or email, maybe somebody can put it in front of my screen, um, for the website. That those applications will be opening within a few weeks. Right? I think we have the dollars in hands, but not the application process. And so and, and if there is additional federal aid, that that will be going to making landlords whole on cash, right? So I think we're, we're, we're doing a lot on making landlords whole. Uh, but where I, I feel, um, according to the testimony and the briefings that I've gotten, that we could be doing more at protecting the tenants who are vulnerable. And so that's where we are today. But, um, I think either Director Powell or Bob Dame Wood, who's waiting, um, if you wanted to get their perspective on kind of like how those systems are being developed. They have a, a closer daily eye on, um, if you're a co, we, we allowed them to have a cooperative agreement with the county and they're creating the systems and the actual like websites and applications. Director Powell, save me.
Yeah, no worries. I just want to say really quickly, um, you know, to the concerns of your constituent, this, uh, new pot of money will be able to reach landlords for back and forward rent. So, you know, in this particular instance where they are owed, you know, what was it, 10 months of rent, they'll be able to apply for that there. Um, and so with the system, we've been, uh, very careful to make sure that we've got resource navigators as well. Um, making sure that for folks who may have difficulty getting access to these funds, who may have language barriers or even, uh, transportation barriers to getting, uh, you know, to some of the drop-in centers that we have, uh, that we're addressing those. You'll be able to utilize a online platform as well as a, um, call-in number as well as some drop-in center. So we tried to make this, um, you know, as, uh, accessible as possible because we know people are desperately in need of funds. Um, and it'll be again, uh, available to landlords, uh, to make sure that they're also made whole as well.
Yes, and Director Powell, I want to thank you for your work. I know you were very involved with Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gross uh, on this moratorium bill. So, um, the federal government is not guaranteed though. Now you say they can apply for what they are in the rears and whatever may come their way in the future. So federal money is not guaranteed at this point. Is that correct? To help?
So it's, it's coming. Um, we are hoping, we're still getting everything in place, obviously. Um, the feds will, will, you know, act as they act. And so we're hoping for, um, March, that that money to be dropped. But we're getting our systems in place now in Pittsburgh so that when it is, when the money finally clears in the bank, uh, we'll be able to move quickly.
Okay. Do you know if?
But that money is committed, it's just not in hand. So this isn't part of the like, what may or may not happen at DC? This is the part that's already been committed?
Yes.
And are there stipulations as to like who can recover, what landlords can recover and can't, or is it everybody, you know, who's owed money and you know, are all the landlords, is there enough money to go around, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, I'm happy to send program guidelines, um, you know, for the folks that are, are putting those together. I'm happy to send those over to you and the rest of council. Um, so that they're, uh, you know, clear and, and when we're able to kind of get them out to the public, we're, we're, we're again able to do that quickly. Um, but the idea is to make sure that again, folks who, um, you know, especially have been just trying to keep people housed during the pandemic, people who might have taken a hit personally, like, uh, your constituent are, are able to be made whole. And then for, for tenants who, you know, have been out of work or, um, have had hardships that made it hard to pay rent, that they're also taken care of as well. But happy to send you a little more, uh, specificity when I have it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Director. And, you know, ultimately, I do understand both sides. I know there are a lot of landlords that actually count on their rent to pay their mortgage. Um, I tend to go on the compassionate side as Mrs. Gross is, you know, so vigorously pursued here. Um, breaks my heart to think about anybody picked, kicked out of their house. And the caller said it yesterday, well, whether you're a good tenant or a bad tenant, nobody should be kicked out of, you know, their home and especially during these times. Uh, so, so I am supportive of it. Um, you know, with the new amendments, I, I will admit I did not look closely at those just yet, but, uh, but I will. And, you know, my district, surprisingly, well, not surprisingly, I guess, but, you know, I think I had the highest number of, uh, folks who, you know, are behind on their rent and, you know, in jeopardy of being forced out of their homes. So anybody listening in my district, I would like to act as an arbitrator between the landlord and the tenant, if possible. Um, and, you know, thanks for, you know, explaining a little bit better so I can explain to both sides, especially the landlords I'm getting calls from who are counting on their rent to be paid as to how they can retrieve that. So, okay, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Other members?
Yes, Councilman.
Council President Smith?
Thank you, Councilman. I just, um, I was sending you some text messages, um, asking, um, some, some questions about, well, how we should handle this. Because I've just seen these amendments, I'm still going over them myself. Have we heard from the law department on, on any of these from our law department?
I said no.
Councilwoman Gross, did you run them through the law department?
Oh, no, sorry. I just received them myself.
Who'd you receive them from?
I was talking with Bob Dame Wood until, um, fairly late last night. And he stayed up even later and drafted these changes, um, that we've been talking about. Um, I think I mentioned.
The one who told you that Harrisburg, um, and, and the things that they've, they just told their courts? Uh, just to do, is he the one? Because I just want to be, I want to be clear to the public.
Came that from, actually, we have Director Powell on the line and she herself had the meeting with the solicitor in Harrisburg, the city of Harrisburg.
So I'm just curious.
Everything I got. Question to her.
So everything I've been told is that the reason we cannot do what Harrisburg did is because Harrisburg has control over their courts, which we do not. That's Allegheny County. So if that's different or you found something or, you know, discovered something new, I'd like to know that.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to defer to the chief.
I'm, I'm asking her. And can we have the law department come to the table, please?
Chief Powell? Anthony Bylin, uh, from the city law department is available.
Thank you. Um, Chief Powell could, or Anthony could, why don't you answer that question? Is there something different that we find out? Or can we do the same thing that Harrisburg has done is what I want to know?
So, uh, uh, from the legal side of things, the, the law department has not construed or rendered or opined on these amendments at this point. If, if council would like an opinion on these amendments or the bill, we're happy to provide a, a written opinion to council that would be protected by the attorney-client privilege.
Yeah, that's the, can I just say, that's the problem. I understand that and I think that maybe we should do an executive session, maybe we should recess this meeting and have one. But I understand that there's concerns, but I think part of the problem is we hear from law and then we can't share that with the public or we, or we can't share a written form with the public. So it gets, um, did, you know, it gets a lot of, um, confusion in the translation. And so I just want to make sure that people understand that. Um, you know, we are trying to find out, uh, find some solutions here. That we are working with the administration. The administration wants to find some solutions. But we can't keep comparing ourselves to cities that we, we don't have the same authority, um, to enact with the things the way, the way they do. That doesn't mean that we can't do something. And I do remember they were talking a little bit about, and I, and I know somebody quoted me wrong about this with the, um, with the police, but they were saying that, um, maybe we could stop the police from issuing the, um, the notices or something. It was something to that effect, but they were going to delve into it a little bit more. But we hadn't heard anymore, so I just wasn't sure where that was. But I do want to say that I think that there's a lot of people working on it. And when you, when I say I have concerns, I have concerns because I was in Sheridan this past weekend and several residents called on a phone and even approached Mayor Perduda because he was in Sheridan too. And he, they approached both of us and were talking about their concerns with this. And they were, one person was saying that he was in a, uh, relationship, it didn't work out with the, with the gentleman he was in the relationship with. It didn't work out with the, with the gentleman he was in the relationship with. He moved out so that he could move in just, or so he could stay there just to refound housing. But he can't knock him out of the house. It's been over a year and he's actually renting rooms in this gentleman's house. And yet he has no recourse. And so we're trying to work with him through those issues. And then there was another gentleman who said he's just a small-time investor, just started investing and he can't collect rent. And yet he's not having any success with the, with the, you know, with the funding that he should be at the CARES Act funding or anything else for that matter. So, so I have concerns for those people. And then today we heard from this woman from Esplin that lives in Councilman Wilson's area, but has property in Esplin. And I do realize those are some of the exceptions. And, but there are a lot more people that are struggling and trying to stay in their homes. And so I want to help those people too. I'm just wondering if there's some way we can help both is all we want. I don't want to make another victim or for me to decide who should be evicted and who shouldn't, or who should lose a home and who shouldn't. I want to make sure that we're helping all people. And, you know, we say we want to help people, saying we want to do it and still making additional victims is not helping people. It's making additional victims. It's, it's us deciding who, who's going to help be a victim and who's not. And I, I don't want to do that. I want to make sure we're helping everyone. And I just want to know legally how we can do that and if there's any suggestions. So I'm wondering if we should have an executive session and I'll, I'll wait to see what the chairperson thinks.
Thank you. Other members first round?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Burgess?
For, first of all, you can add me to a co-sponsor of this legislation. First of all, I am always interested in protecting people from harm. And certainly evicting them from their homes in winter during COVID could cause them harm. I do want to make, I, I do think we need to be aware of an incongruency that I want to lift up. I, I find these, I've, I've had these, had these interesting things that I find incongruent. I won't call them hypocrisy yet, but they're incongruent. Let me give you an example. It's interesting that we're building new affordable housing in Homewood, right? There was a group of homeowners who bought their houses with 50% subsidy, right? They're, they're homeowners, but their houses were subsidized by the city somewhere between 40 to 50% of the work. So, you know, second to first, all that kind of stuff. They got subsidies. Yet those homeowners who got their houses with subsidies opposed building, renting affordable housing to the same kind of people because of subsidy, right? I find it in, in this moment, kind of, again, that same kind of incongruency, right? We have these whole, these, these landlords who won't take vouchers, who discriminate by income from tenants, who do not want tenants who get assistance to live in their houses. And we know they use it as, we, we, I mean, we're all adults and know that actually is a form of racism. That's really why they do it, because they don't want black people living and they're afraid that vouchers will mean black people. And so they do it so they don't have, not all, but there is a, that, that's a consistency. You know, we've seen that, you know, from large renters. There's been multiple studies about large renters discriminating against black people. I find it interesting that these same landlords are so willing and are so quick to want this federal, these federal dollars to make up their losses when they won't take on the front end the same federal dollars in the form of vouchers. I just find it, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not making a conclusion. I just find it's that we're in that incongru, that's incongruent to me. It seems to me that both should be true, that they should be willing to take vouchers on the front end so that people who have vouchers can live in clean, decent, affordable housing. That's money guaranteed by the federal government. And they also should be able to get resources when COVID also from the federal government on the backend. I, I just, and again, I, I find that, that, again, I don't call it hypocritical. I have found that I'm, I'm learning to call it interesting incongruencies. And so, again, this is good, what we're doing. Absolutely should do it. The federal government should help them. I'm just suggesting to them and to everyone who listen that in addition to this, we should also be willing to accept the money on the front end, which is the same federal money, same federal dollars, allow these renters to use their vouchers. As everyone knows, this council passed anti-source-of-income discrimination, source of, you know, source of income. And it got struck down by state in, in, in terms of court. But it's still the right thing. And I think this is the time, you know, it was up to me. I'm not king of the world. So I, I, and again, I don't have this right. But I, I would say if I was in charge of the program and I had the power to do it, if you didn't take vouchers, you would not get a dollar of this money. Because I, I think that you've already decided you don't want federal dollars. Fine, that's right. You don't want federal dollars. Don't take it. And you shouldn't, you know, you shouldn't get it on the backend when you have denied it. You've denied renting to people who had the resources to pay for the apartment, but you didn't want that type of income on the front end. So I'm just, again, that's just my own thinking. I, I'll call it an interesting incongruency. And so when both are true, right? We should help them. But I'm also using this as the moment for them to take an introspective look at themselves and say, you know what, you know, both are true, right? I, it, you know, I, I just find, I find it, it's, it's interesting. I, I've been interested with people who are fiercely pro-life, they're also pro-death penalty. I, I, that's an interesting incongruency, right? It's, it's, it doesn't make sense to me. And so I, I, I just think that people should be consistent in their worldview. And, so anyway, let me stop talking. But that, again, I, I'm, I'm asking to be a co-sponsor. I'm supportive. Councilwoman Gross has done a great job in leading this. And so to the extent you want my help, you probably, I mean, don't need my help. But I'm, I'm supportive of the idea. You know, I'm always in the protecting the people mode. And, and I just find it though, I find these landlords wanting to suck up this federal money at this time interesting when they are unwilling to take the same dollars to allow black, brown people to live in their apartments. Primarily that disproportionately, not completely, but we know vouchers are disproportionately used by black and brown people. And so by not taking vouchers, you're also, you're also refusing disproportionately black and brown people to live in your housing.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm happy to have you as a sponsor.
Thank you. Any other members first round? Saying that, I, I do have a question myself. One Reverend, what you call it, I call it situational ethics is what they're practicing. Also think the point you make, and there is a case, a legal case, given the paid sick leave ruling for us to go back to court, as you're well aware, for source of income legislation. And I also think that this time in accepting the federal dollars also may potentially help with another legal argument of why they should have to accept these dollars for source of income. But that's a whole nother fight that we'll absolutely have. My two questions, I think they're directed at Chief Powell. Thank you. So the fund that is being, going to be shared by the city and the county, is there going to be a cap on what landlords can apply for?
I actually don't immediately know that off the top of my head. I do want to make sure to refer and share council people with the program guidelines. But if there is anyone from the OMB team that have been working on this as well that can join or would want to speak to this.
Sure. Thanks, Director Powell. Hi. There is no dollar cap for the funding. There is a cap in terms of the period of time that they can receive the assistance. So it's, I think of it in three-month increments. People have to be recertified every three months in terms of whether they still qualify. So, you know, it's 12 months maximum with a three-month extension possible. It can go back to April 1st of 2020. It can't go before that because it has to be connected to hardships related to COVID. And that, that was mid-March. So, but it can address back rent, rental, right there, rares, I should say, and forward rent. So, you know, we're actually in the midst of, we just got some guidance from the Treasury Department finally, day before yesterday, some guidance. And we're working closely with the county to set up some policies and procedures for the program, as we speak. So it's kind of a moving, it's very much a fast-moving train at this point. But there's eight point nine million that the city's been provided, but from the Treasury Department and then roughly 27 million from the, for the county. And, and then we're anticipating another 44 million roughly from the state for the program. So stay tuned. But there is no maximum amount, I should say.
Okay, thank you. You answered my question, which was also answering my second question, which was, could landlords try to acquire what wasn't paid pre-pandemic? Because one of the complaints that you, that we've heard, and I've heard directly, at least from some, is that there were individuals who were not paying their rent before the pandemic hit. And then once the pandemic hit, we then put the moratorium in place. Thus, the, it just continued to add up. And so they're looking to figure out how can they go back and deal with that issue as well, which I believe unfortunately is in many respects mean, while we're absolutely doing the right thing right now, absolutely. For some, we're also sort of preventing, which will at some point be a rush to the courts once a declaration is released. And I just think we all need to collectively think through what that's going to look like and how, what sort of impact that's going to have. It's just because we're pushing down the inevitable for some, unfortunately. Any other members for second round?
Councilman-
Yeah, thank you. Deputy Director, Deputy Chief Powell. How are you? We'll get your title right sooner or later. Good morning. Thank you for being here. I, I don't want it to get lost in the conversation that the council does not appreciate the efforts of Mayor Perdido and yourself in assisting, working with the council collectively in crafting this legislation and submitting it to council. And I'm afraid that has kind of gotten lost and I don't want that to, to be. At the same time, I certainly want to respect Councilwoman Gross's efforts in leading the council's desire to work collectively with the administration and to put forward a piece that is going to be in the best interest of everyone. So I was just wondering, I don't want to necessarily go back to the amendments, but have you had a chance to review the amendments? I, I'm not looking-
I'm interjecting, but I'll just remind that no one motioned to amend yet.
That's correct. No, 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 no. And I'm, I'm almost, Mr. Chair, if you'll permit, again, interrupt. I'm not suggesting that we should either. In fact, I think I may even be taking a more cautious approach of Councilwoman and saying that we should pass today as presented. Because I'm worried, I don't want us to get caught up in, you know, additional detail and do un, un, I can't think of the word right, you know?
Yes, no, but that was my emotional motion and open comments, but then you got a little-
We don't want to, we don't want to harm by delaying in any way. So I, I think where I'm actually going with this is that we really should, should pass what we have all agreed upon. And then we can, I mean, we have the power of the council. We can come back, you know, tomorrow night if necessary, you know, and assemble to amend in any way that we seem as, to think is going to be beneficial to, to the passage of the legislation. So I just, I'm worried that we don't take action today on what we already can all clearly agree upon and, and, and delay any process because this is an urgent situation. So, but it, it, you know, so Deputy Chief Powell, have you had a chance to look at them? I'm not look, I'm not trying to put you on the spot in any way. Yeah, okay. So I guess more than anything, my, my remarks really were to, to share appreciation of the council for the Mayor Perdido and the administration's willingness to work with us. I know their desire is as strong as our desire to, to see this work and make this work. And I, I guess for the members that are here, just to reiterate, my initial concern is that we strike a balance. I think Councilwoman Coghill has referenced that. I believe each member that has spoken this morning actually has referenced a desire to strike a balance. And we don't want to leave behind our good landlords that so many of us have. I, I, I know that third council district, we have far exceeded the 50% rental property market. And I know any number of our landlords are good landlords. I don't want to harm in any way. And at the same time, we have, we're duty-bound to, to be compassionate and to make certain that people are not evicted at, as Councilwoman Gross says, this once in a hundred-year global pandemic. So if, if, you know, if the council's willing to continue discussion, I, I certainly will step aside and allow it to continue. But I think where I am right now is that we absolutely should pass what we have all agreed today and, and take the amendments under consideration for further examination. And if they prove to be the right direction, then absolutely I will support. Thank you.
Thank you. President Smith and then Councilman Coghill?
Thank you so much, Councilman. I, I love, I liked what everyone's comments, I liked some of your, some of the comments made. But I just want to say, I also don't want to delay the help that, that's needed, you know, weeks ago. So I'm even okay if we amend and vote on the amendments and then take the week before final action next week to commit to everyone working on this together and coming up with amendments that, or making any type of amendments to the amendments, to the, to the final, to the final package that we can do over the next few days. I'm okay with that too. I just, what I don't want to see is us not passing something where we can help people now. But I also want us to consider that there's a lot of other unintended consequences harming people that we don't want to harm them either. We just, and a lot of people that are not big-time landlords. And, and I know that there's, there's different levels. There's more concerns with others that are, that are larger developers and, and larger landlords. I understand that. But, yeah, we have a lot of, you know, small-time landlords in our district. And I know Lance Harrow in our, in our area does all he can to keep properties, you know, beautifully maintained and renovated in Sheridan and, you know, he's, and he, but at the same time, and keep them affordable. But at the same time, he can't afford to not have rent either. So I just, I just want, I don't want to help, I don't want to hurt people like him who are doing the right things by our communities too. So if there's some way that we could vote today with amendments, I'm okay with that, whatever the council decides. But I think that we could take the next week to make, commit, to commit to working on what a final plan looks like, what a final draft looks like, and with the law department and their approval. And Mr. Damehood, who we know has been passionate about this issue for a very long time.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
Mr. Chair, it's not like you to miss the sequence of hands, but I believe Councilwoman Strasburger was before me.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Councilman. I'm fine with you going first.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, you're welcome. So I guess I, my, my question is, and I like what everybody's saying, you know, we could pass this today and then we could look at the amendments and make sure everything. I guess I, just simple question is, has the process for applicants, for landlords, for landlords to put their applications in to get refunded or, you know, reimbursed? Has that started yet or no?
No, it's been worked on now. Hopefully within prior to next two weeks, they'll be able to begin.
Okay, and that would just be on a city-county level, not a federal level?
Yeah, utilizing federal dollars. But yes, it'd be locally for our city and county.
Got it. Okay, so that's not, that was it for me. Thanks.
Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, I am going to dig into the weeds, but before I do that, I want to address one topic that I don't think has, well, not a topic, but one kind of answer that I don't think has been addressed around, you know, who, who are we helping here? Who are we hurting? Are we picking losers, picking and choosing winners and losers? Which is that I know that, that anyone can probably paint a picture, a synthetic picture of a- I know that, that anyone can probably paint a picture, a synthetic picture of a smaller, you know, let's call them mom and pop landlord, property owner that has some serious cash flow issues because of nonpayment from their tenants and that they might be in, you know, a, a really bad state. But the most vulnerable, the very most vulnerable are the tenants because they are at risk of losing their homes. And if they lose their homes, that is a serious health and safety concern. That can then, and as we know, it's much more expensive to, you know, to address someone who is houseless than to keep them in their home and work with them in that state. Being without a home can, can result in a spiral of, and I don't have to tell anyone to hear that, but can result in a spiral of, of, of various health and safety issues that perpetuate again and again and again. So I understand that there are property owners who are in a really difficult situation as well. And I'm sure that, you know, could hear stories and stories and stories and, and, you know, that's sympathetic to their situation, but I'm interested in helping the most vulnerable. And those are people who could lose their homes. I guess my first question is for anyone, whether that's Whitney, whether that's for Chief Powell, about the actual eight point nine million that council voted to allocate in addition to the counties. And the last time we asked, I don't think we got an answer to the question. I'm wondering if we have clarity over the, the county's amount is something like twenty eight million they have to allocate to this. And we only have about eight million. Do we know yet whether if we exceed the number, that if the need exceeds eight point nine million in the city by city residents? Would city residents then be able to access some of the county funds? Is that going to be fixed into the same pot and look fungible? Do we know that yet? We didn't know that last time.
Correct. This is what you've gone be. That is correct. So the county funds will be for city residents, right? Both city and county. The, we're, we're trying to structure it so that terms of accountability, we're trying to make sure that we can account for the eight point nine million, you know, the city is receiving. But in the sense of the actual person who's trying to access these resources, they're not going to know the difference, difference between whether the funds are coming from the city or the county. So it'll be, you know, seamless for them hopefully through this process. So and, and then in the forty four million that we're hoping comes from the state as well. It'll be the same situation. It'll come to the county and that will be, you know, for city residents as well. For both. Does that help to answer your question?
Yeah. So we're not restricted. City residents will not be restricted by the eight point nine million that city council approved. They will have access to funds greater than that.
Correct.
Okay, great. That's good to know. That's helpful to be aware of. A second question, I guess, is for Mr. Daywood, if he is willing to come on.
Yes, Councilperson.
Thank you for being here and thank you for all your work. I'm looking through, I mean, I did read the amendment, the proposed amendments, but I'm looking through the amendment summary, and I had a question about one aspect, which is failure, failure to prevent evictions due to lease expiration, which says that the bill is written fails to prohibit evictions based on end of lease term. And I'm trying to figure out, as I go back to the original bill as drafted, there is a section that says no landlord can refuse to renew or release, renew a lease or terminate a lease due to previous tenant nonpayment or lease term violation, which is then in the proposed amendment, moved to just a different section of the bill. So I'm wondering what actual, actually is the change in this proposed amendment? When it comes to, because I know that that's the biggest thing we're worried about as March thirty first arrives or approaches is, is just nonrenewal leases.
Correct. So the, the legislation that was voted on yesterday, it contains that clause that says a landlord may not refuse to renew a lease. But there's, there's two issues with that. One is the condition. There's a subjective condition, may not refuse to renew a lease for certain reasons, right? And it's unclear who makes that determination. But the other, the other issue is that that renewal, that a landlord may not refuse to renew, that, you know, protects tenants who's, who have existing leases that are not up for renewal yet, that haven't expired yet. It doesn't help tenants whose leases have already expired and are already in the system. You mentioned earlier about tenants that have judgments for possession entered against them already. There's hundreds of tenants that, that are in that situation. If a tenant has a judgment for possession entered against them for end of lease term, for holding over after the expiration of an end of lease term, you know, that is who needs to be protected in, you know, through, through a moratorium. Right now, there's nothing that will, that will protect tenants in that situation. And, you know, the CDC order doesn't because that's been interpreted as only applying to evictions for nonpayment of rent that are related, you know, where the, where the tenant delivers a, a declaration that the nonpayment is due to, you know, substantial income loss due to COVID. You know, so, so right now, it's the, it's those tenants who have judgments for possession entered against them, many for end of lease term that need the protection and the existing language, just prohibiting landlords from from refusing to renew a lease during the pendency during, you know, while this ordinance is in effect, doesn't speak to them.
I understand what you're saying. I don't quite understand how the language in the bill works to change that, but I'm willing to have further conversation so that we don't have to belabor this point right now. So.
Well, I can answer that really quickly if it's okay. So, um, so what the, what the amendments would do is it would provide an across the board moratorium. No landlord may evict except for good cause. And then it defines what good cause is. Expiration of lease term is not defined as good cause in, in the amendments. And so what it would do is it would add certainty to, to the process. So landlords would know whether they were covered or they would have, they would be able to find out by appealing to a city agency to determine whether they are covered, whether an eviction may go forward or not. Right now, that's not the case. You know, I, I represent nonprofit tenants as well, or non-profit landlords as well as tenant associations. And right now, if a client of mine asked me whether they could evict for, you know, non, for some of the, some of the instances that landlords testified to today about tenants not, you know, paying rent for the last year and they, you know, landlords feel that they can pay the rent, they're just, they're just refusing to. I wouldn't be able to answer that, whether, you know, that situation would be covered under this ordinance as written. But by, by amending the ordinance, by applying the moratorium across the board and then designating an agency to consider landlord applications to determine whether they are exempt or covered by the ordinance. That adds some, some predictability, that adds some certainty to the enforcement of, of this ordinance.
That makes, that makes more sense. Thank you. And you're shifting the burden of proof onto the property owner as opposed to the tenant. Thank you. So I guess I'll direct a previous question to you. I have no doubt that the Commission on Human Relations and the, has the talent and the ability to, to, to develop these policies and to be able to do that very quickly during this time. So I don't doubt why you chose them, but I, I wonder if you can help me understand if, you know, if something then does get to a a, like it goes to court, this actually does go to court. And they have whatever sort of ruling came down from CHR. What will they do with that? Will they, do you, I mean, do you have a theory as to what they will do with that? It does seem like this is a bit of advocacy in the way that we're approaching it, but is there a precedent for that anywhere else? I mean, I know, because we're not really equivalent to what we're doing in Harrisburg or in Philadelphia. So.
Well, actually, and that's, that's a very good question. Actually, you know, Harrisburg does not control the court system as Councilman K. Smith, you know, asked earlier. You know, so Philadelphia has its own court system. Harrisburg is within Dauphin County, you know, just like we're within Allegheny County and, and you know, the, the courts are within the state unified judicial system, but at the, at the county level, if county jurisdiction. So, you know, Pittsburgh can't really, you know, Pittsburgh doesn't control Allegheny County courts anymore than Harrisburg controls Dauphin County courts. And so, you know, in, in the, in the first section, the, the section of the ordinance that, that talks about the declaration of COVID hardship or the certification of COVID hardship and what the courts, you know, the tenants can, can submit that in a court and how the courts should treat that, that is really, I think, up to court rules to determine, you know, if that's enacted, I think it's really up to Allegheny, Allegheny County courts to issue, to consider that and decide whether they want to issue local rules to, to implement that. But the remaining provisions really speak to the conduct of landlords. You know, they, they speak to the conduct of people who are within the jurisdiction of the city of Pittsburgh. So if a landlord has a judgment for possession that they've gotten from the court, can they execute? Can they take that step to request an order for possession and the council to come and lock somebody out, right? That is a landlord action. And the city has jurisdiction over the conduct of landlords in deciding whether to take that action. That's what, you know, the, the city of Harrisburg did. You know, and that's what the, that's what that section of, of the ordinance really is directed at. It's not directed at the courts, it's directed at the landlords.
Thank you. I have one more question, and this is for Director Hammond.
I'm here.
Hi, thank you. I, again, as I just stated before, I have no doubt of your, your talent, your ability, your, your, your whole team's ability to to do what is instructed in this proposed amendment, which is to develop procedures for accepting and reviewing requests for exemption from the requirements of this chapter in partnership with such boards, authorities and departments of the city and non-governmental entities as it finds appropriate. My question is, do you, do you have the bandwidth to do this? Is this, is this actually doable for you?
That's a very good question. So that is part of why there's this, this part in the, the proposed amendment about with the partnership of boards and authorities and and other entities that are non-governmental. I would say, you know, actually from the commission's standpoint, you know, there was a question, where does our authority come from? In the city charter, we can be assigned to enforce any law ordinance. So if it were put into an ordinance, we could be in charge of assigning it or in charge of answering that enforcement question. But our commission is focused on fair housing. So that's one aspect of what could be in an eviction. It could be a discriminatory eviction. That's where we have our expertise. But there are other areas of eviction, many, many, that I think we would need additional expertise to address. So I think that, and then again to your question, in terms of our staff capacity specifically, of course, you'll remember a few months ago, we had a conversation about the, the budget and how the city council had given us new powers and the city code to address police matters. And we have requested an additional investigator and we were denied in the budget. And then it turns out that we will also have to lose another position in July potentially. So as far as capacity, having lost a position and then in the position of losing another one, I'm not sure that staff capacity is necessarily there. What we would need to do to address this would be to rely on outside expertise to bolster both our ability to address questions that are not fair housing questions and to actually process any of these applications for the ability to evict. I think there's another question too, that hasn't necessarily been brought up, that does speak to capacity, which is liability. Some people have kind of addressed that there are two sides to this equation, the landlords. So the question is, what happens then if a landlord, like imagine this amendment comes to be, the commission and its partners have created a criteria and the criteria rules that a landlord did not pass this just cause threshold. And the landlord says, well, I disagree with that. What is that person's recourse? And then speaking of liability, who is the person that is who is responding to this statement of, you know, I disagree with that? Is it the commission itself with its own solicitor? Because what I will say about that is we are limited also in our solicitor funding and our solicitor capacity. Is it the city that's responding to this? And if it is the city, again, to a question that, that people have raised several times, how has the law department been involved in, in this idea? Because we would need to have their buy-in if there would then be asked to, to defend a decision like that. So I'm not sure that that capacity of addressing the liability of a landlord who says, I was, I was wrongly decided against currently exists because this program doesn't exist yet. So a lot of things need to be built out. I will say this is not me saying that the commission is against any part of this and that, you know, we want to be part of this solution if it comes to be. But I think there are a lot of things that need to be kind of fleshed out in order for this to be really successful for tenants to, to be protected.
Thank you for all of that. Makes sense. And we'd need to marshal our resources from all over, right, to be able to make this a success. So I, I agree with what others have said. I'd like to take some sort of action today as agnostic as to whether it is passage of the original bill as written or passage of the amendment, understanding that we have a lot of work to do between now and next Tuesday. I would like something to pass today, but I think there are many more conversations we need to have. I'd like to hear from the law department, but I understand that we don't have. It probably would be best to meet in an executive session and, and also Chief Powell. So I, you know, many more discussions to come. I'm really grateful to Councilwoman Gross and everyone who's worked on this. Chief Powell, everyone who's worked on this. We're heading in the right direction. Just a few more answers to get.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, you have your hand up? And, okay.
Yeah. So let me, I don't know how to put that thing down. There we go. I, I really appreciate the really keen observations and questions from members and the responses from members of the administration and from Director of the Commission on Human Relations. This is, and thank you for, to Mr. Daywood and to Mr. Hammond for being able to articulate those things more clearly than I could. Well, I just wanted to maybe take an opportunity to hear back and kind of, I, I was briefed on this, but I wasn't really able to get it out in our opening comments. So what I heard was that the way we have the first text of the legislation in front of us, we are not protecting the people who are kind of already in proceedings and are, are those four hundred or so that I talked about, right? And with this text change, we could add in protections for them as well. On top of that, we clarify by adding in the Commission on Human Relations. We clarify and assign those conversations with landlords who have grievances to try to give them a pathway to see whether their grievance is covered under the ordinance. And so it's both things. I kind of spoke to the one, but that, that second one, I think I really understand more clearly now that we, we protect more people from getting into the pipeline. But then the new language also protects the people who are so close to actually being forced out of their homes. And our, the first draft of the legislation does not. So that's what I heard. And I'm gonna, I guess I'll defer to Mr. Daywood or Mr. Hammond if they want to confirm that that's what I heard them say.
Councilwoman Gross, do you mind if I just jump in for a second?
I'd actually like, like my question answered first, if you don't mind.
Listen, I have to run. I'd like to, I vote. Well, listen, I have to run. I'd like to, I vote for the remaining bills on this one and the, and the rest. So I just wanted to get that.
Noted.
To, to quickly answer your question, Councilwoman, um, the way I read the legislation is that people who have judgments for possession against them already are potentially covered under the current language, but it's unclear. Because there's subjective determinations that need to be made and there's nobody appointed to make those determinations, right? So, so the, the coverage is potentially there, it's just not clearly there. And so the proposed amendments would, would clarify, you know, who is covered and, and give both landlords and tenants the ability to, you know, to have some certainty over, over that question.
Thank you. I think that does, that, that makes it more clear for me. I'll defer, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cross.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I appreciate the, the discussion today. It's been very helpful and certainly enlightening for me. I think we can collectively say we all agree on where we want to be. And I think we just need a few technical changes to achieve that goal that we set for ourselves. I, I still am of the mindset to pass as is today, so as to not take action, which is imperative that we do. And then if we wish to enter into an executive session to clarify with law, what would be the very best verbiage that we could use to ensure that we protect existing judgments as well as landlords and other precautions that members have voiced today, that we clearly have the opportunity to do that and to do that correctly in time for the final vote next Tuesday. I'll go with the will of the body. I'm happy to do it, but I just thought I would express that one more time. We just want to make certain that we proceed not cautiously, but accurately and, and achieve the goal that we have clearly set for ourselves today. And that's my comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So Councilwoman Gross, as the sponsor, as the primary sponsor, if I'm hearing everyone correctly, it's let's vote what we have. Let's work, let's go into executive session tomorrow, Friday or Monday, work through the issues and then provide a final amendment for Tuesday.
I'm comfortable. I'm sorry, but I, I did hear both sides. So it's, it would be so much easier right now if we were in chambers and could be like kind of talking and looking at each other a little more easily, wouldn't it? When these kinds of really big things that we're trying to move quickly happen, we're missing all of the kind of sidebars and body cues that we often, we are able to do in chambers that we can't do here. Because I did hear some members as we went around say, we could do both. We could actually amend, we could change our mind about the language so that we could do final amendments at the table. We could have both briefings and executive session since it's Wednesday and we have the remainder of the week. So I, I, I think I heard Councilwoman really say that she was, was wanting to move forward the amendments, but I'll stop talking.
Can I just say this? I mean, we could also recess now and go into executive session and reconvene today. If that's something council members are able to do. I just think people are waiting for us to work on this. Let's work on it as quickly as we can, however we can.
I appreciate that. I mean, if members are willing, I say then let's just pass it because we still have the final vote where we can, let's just a motion to amend and then we have that language to work with instead of having really no language on the table in front of us. If we don't amend, we don't have that language on the table.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Excuse me. Okay. Councilwoman Gross is done. Councilman Burgess?
Real quickly, I'm uncomfortable with the amendments without being, without them being vetted through the law department. I'm just, I, again, I just got them this morning. I don't know whether I, I am, I am, and I have to, you know, leave too. But I am willing to pass this bill as is right now. And then we can work privately on, I, I think that, you know, Councilman Kraus's way forward is the way I agree with, that we pass this as is, we all agree with this, let's pass this as is. Let's wait, let's work this week together on amendments. If we can't come to the conclusion, we have forever to make amendment. But let's pass, since we have something that we can all agree with, let's pass this now and move forward and then work on amendments over the next week, next year, next month, as long as it takes. So that's, that's my personal preference.
So Councilwoman Gross, my fear is if we go into executive session, we're going to start losing members.
My schedule wouldn't permit it.
Right now, as opposed to simply voting this right now and then working collectively.
I agree. I agree. I don't think we have the, you know, not being in person and being, and being, trying to remote recess would be, would be difficult. So we will be scheduling executive sessions that we can make sure we can all be at as quickly as possible. And again, we can also additionally have briefings for staff on stuff that isn't from the law department directly, because I feel like there's still, this is still a lot to be comfortable with. And so it's, it'd be helpful to have assistance so we can try to parse out after we're done, what part can be done in briefings, what part can be done in executive session.
Yeah, but we will get there.
I agree. I really appreciate everybody digging in. This is what we need and we know that time is of the essence because we have so many people who are at risk.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So as of right now, we have a motion to approve on the table. It was seconded. We had discussion, but we did not make a motion to amend. So we're just voting on the bill as is. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is recommended. Thank you. And we'll work with Madam President and Madam Clerk to get the executive session scheduled.
Mr. Chair, I, I meant to do this before I, before we actually voted. Would it be too late to add my name as a co-sponsor as well? I think we're probably going to end up with nine co-sponsors, but I would like to. After this discussion today, I feel better about, you know, about, I just feel clearer about it. So thank you.
If the, if Councilwoman Gross is okay, I would ask the clerk to just add all members.
Yep.
Noted.
All right. Thank you all. Um, where are we? Okay, Bill 1182, still under land use and economic development.
Bill 1182 Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 CDVG Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program so as to reduce Southside Athletic Association by $5,000 and increase Rashir Association by $5,000 and authorize a subsequent agreement.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Need a second.
Need a second, please. Thank you. So I am actually going to motion to table this bill. I have had a discussion with Whitney Finstrom about the reallocation of these funds from Southside Athletic Association to Rashir. That is not a necessary reallocation. So I just didn't want members to think that we had not worked through this and discussed it as, so that, that is what brought me to motion to table the bill today. I just did not want to table the bill without explaining that we went through due process to discover the fact that we want to table it. So my motion is going to be to table Bill 1182. If I may have a second on that, please.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ayes five.
Don't you need a super majority at the table?
Yeah, we, yeah. Councilman Wilson registered aye votes, all votes. Councilman O'Connor registered aye before he left, as well as Councilman Cockhill.
Okay.
Registered aye votes.
Thank you. I forgot that part. So the bill, the bill is tabled.
Thanks, everybody.
New papers, Bill 1207.
Bill 1207 Resolution Amending Resolution Number 262 of 2018, authorizing the mayor and director of city planning to accept a $46,000 grant award from the Pennsylvania Department of Preservation and Natural Resources to support the development of a Hill District Park master plan and to combine this funding with the previously budgeted $60,000 city match to enter into contract to hire consultant Grounds Well Design Group, Inc. to develop aforementioned master plan with a total contract value not to exceed $106,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Brief discussion, Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, please, yeah.
I just want to thank Director Dash, Chief Gilman and many others for moving this through the process as quickly as possible. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill was recommended. Bill 1208.
Bill 1208 Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 40 of 2019, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDVG Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program so as to identify specific projects in city council District 7 and authorize a subsequent agreement for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess. One new paper, Bill 1193.
Bill 1193 Resolution Providing For An amended lease agreement for the use of the West End Senior Center, located at 80 Wall Bash Street and for the provision of center services to seniors in an amount not to exceed $45,673.64 chargeable to and payable from the Senior Community Program Trust Fund in the Department of Parks and Recreation. The city is in the process of purchasing 80 Wall Bash Street from the property owner, Smith and Bowen, and will continue to pay rent as authorized here under until transaction is completed.
Motion to approve.
Second, with discussion, please.
Discussion.
Thank you. I just want to thank the administration. This is a building, it's the Healthy Active Living Center in the West End, which serves a lot of our district. And I want to thank Director Chapman and the administration. They are purchasing this building and this is just to get us through that process. It's my understanding. And Director Chapman, if you want to say something?
Thanks, Council President. Yes, that's exactly correct. We have to extend the lease agreement just by a little bit until the transaction is approved. But we've been working on this for a while. It helps with the senior program trust fund. So we don't have to allocate financial resources from that trust fund. We can use that money to program and it's in a city's best interest to acquire this property because it's a little bit more than just the senior center. So it seems like it's a win-win. It's just taking a little longer. So we'll keep paying rent until the city acquires the property. So thanks for your support too, Council President. It's been.
Thank you. And if people, if people recall, this is where we did one of our food distributions for almost a month. They, you allowed us to use that building for the community and it was really, it was very helpful with the parking lot and handicap accessibility. And so I really appreciate, but it's really important to the residents of the West End communities, including West End proper and Elliot, Mount Washington, other places where Banksville, where people come to that center from all over the area because it's a convenient location. So it was really important. The residents did not want to lose it. They love Jolie there. And they wanted to make sure that, you know, she, they were, she was able to stay and they were able to work there. So thank you all very much for your work on this. I know it means.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. First new paper, Bill 1198.
Bill 1198 Resolution Adopting The Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official School Facilities Plan For The Baumhaus Phase Two Project, Which Will Involve The Development Of 198 Multi-Unit Apartment Complex With Associated Indoor Adilities As Well As A Leasing Office. The Site Address Is 5536 Baum Boulevard In The Eighth Ward.
I'm going to motion to approve today, motion to approve on a second.
Second.
But I'm still kind of double checking on this one, so I'm going to let this one go through. And if with your indulgence, I might have more information on Tuesday, but I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1199.
Bill 1199 Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official School Facilities Plan For The North Shore Parking Garage.
Sorry, is that my motion to approve it? No discussion. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1200.
Bill 1200 Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Human Resources And Civil Service To Enter Into An Agreement With Goodwill Of Southwestern PA For Administrative Services Related To The 2021 Learn And Earn Summer Youth Employment Program At A Cost Not To Exceed $200,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. We wish, I'm sorry, we wish comment from the director? She's here.
I'm comfortable.
I'm good.
I am too, really. Director, thanks for, for sticking it out with us. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Sorry, Director, sorry to keep you waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1201.
Bill 1201 Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Human Resources And Civil Service To Enter Into An Intergovernmental Corporation Agreement With The County Of Allegheny And Partner For Work For The Shared Operation And Administration Of The 2021 Learn And Earn Summer Youth Employment Program In An Amount Not To Exceed $1,500,000.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
I'll say I'm supportive. I know that we had a lot of questions last year while we were in COVID and about how these things would be executed. I mean, if members want to, you know, ask after today, provide provisional vote and then we could have, you know, revisions or concerns addressed on Tuesday, that's fine with me. But I'm going to hold any, any more detailed diving today. Appreciate it.
Director, can we just give you the, could you give us just the, the, the short version?
We're, hello everyone. Janet Manuel, Director Of Human Resources And Civil Service. The 2021 platform will emulate the 2020 platform. We know that last year, due to COVID-19, that there was a dual process of in-person and online. There were over 1,900 eligible applicants. All 100% of those eligible applicants were placed. So that is the good thing. We are going to follow the same process as for 2021 as we did for 2020. And that is to have the two aspects. One will be online and then they will also have the ability for the youth to be in-person and on-site. Of course, following the same processes that are, that everyone must adhere to, adhere to regarding COVID-19 mask wearing, social distancing, et cetera. But the platform with the iPads or the small computers and everything will still be the same as it was described in 2020.
Thanks, Director. Appreciate you hanging with us today. Thank you. I'm glad. I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended.
Thanks, Director.
Thank you.
That exhausts our Jennifer today. We do have some meeting announcements. Next week, council will hold their regular and standing committee meetings. Excuse me, on Tuesday and Wednesday, March 2nd and 3rd at 10:00 AM respectively. To register to speak at the council meetings, please fill out the sign-up form in its entirety on the council meeting schedule webpage. Registration deadlines are 9:00 AM, the day of regular and standing committee meetings. You may also register to speak by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members? Seeing none, need a motion to approve the minutes in adjournment.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.